Comprehensive report. Ralph is good. It was a comprehensive report.
Thank you.
Okay, next going to action items is the hot ad hoc committee. So as I recall,
Ad hoc.
The ad hoc, we may have a few new ones. We have a budget and compensation committee and we have a facilities committee, correct?
Yes.
Well, they're they're ad hocs, so we don't have standing ones?
Right, but what did we last have?
We last had, there was a subcommittee established in the November meeting to discuss the new fundraising bank,
Right.
things like that. And that was Steve and OJ.
Okay.
And last year, the budget and compensation committee was
Me and Pat.
Ralph and Pat.
And
Pat, which I thought worked really well. And I think there's probably still
Well, they had one good member.
And then the last time we had the facilities.
Was Steve and OJ.
Yeah, is that right?
Yep.
Keep it that way. And we, okay, so.
And what new ones do you want?
Well, I think it's more, look, I'm a staff guy, so I'm not gonna create a bunch of committees for you to have to do a bunch of work. I think, so I think it's more what do you need? I think we, based off of yesterday, I think the budget and compensation committee is a good committee to continue. Ralph, are you
Yes.
that's willing to continue to serve on that?
Yeah.
You both, I had a lot of comfort knowing that you both were working with Liz on that. I think that was efficient for the staff because it made your work in front of all of us easier. So let's keep that. The facilities committee, I think, is gonna have some potential new charges, some new work.
Probably not this year, but yes.
Well.
Well, who knows?
Ma'am.
Don't talk too much.
And then we have this kind of philanthropy fundraising thing. So not making more work for you because committees generate work, those seem to be three
Important ones.
Any other thoughts?
Well, the philanthropy thing seems to kind of worry information.
Well, we need, we need to get the information.
We're putting that off until April, you said.
But we should get the, we should get that information.
That's what I heard you say yesterday, and that makes me happy.
Yeah.
My favorite committee is the committee on committees.
We need a committee on paper reduction.
The report on reports.
And then we can have a whole grid of questions to have to be answered.
Oh, my God.
And
With the percentages.
Please.
Abigail could work on that one.
So who, who wants to be involved in the
of the night, sorry, please?
Are you volunteering for something?
As you're going through this process, I just recently went through a battery of tests, which I'm gonna start getting results back this week. And so I won't be committing to anything.
Got it.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Good luck with those, Ralph.
Appreciate it.
So.
No, I don't think so.
Um.
Good. Oh, I don't know. So I'd be happy to to serve on the advancement or
That's the spirit. I'm saying, sure.
I think we call it the development.
Development.
That's the spirit.
Title you wanna give it. I would love to relinquish my spot on the facilities, although I love facilities. I love
Ralph will do that. Ralph will do that, I think.
I'd like to
Ralph put it that.
Yeah, I know.
All right.
Huh?
Oh, yes.
And then Ralph and I'll do facilities.
All right.
Okay.
Do I have to meet with him?
Done.
Can you two do development? So Pat and Ralph are budget.
And you and you and Ralph are facilities. And then we're gonna meet with Abigail to
That sounds good, boss.
That sounds great.
There's your team.
All right, done.
So the, I'm just making notes here, development committee is the, that's the name of that one, and who is it?
Tom and Steve.
I just looked so forward to this.
Talk about our fundraising, funding, outdoor, side stuff.
Don't mess it up.
Ralph and I will handle facilities.
Kareem, help me get this place.
Pat and Ralph are the budget and compensation committee, which they've done an excellent job on.
Who is our staff liaison?
Me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Our staff liaison.
Yeah.
Ralph and I don't need a staff liaison. Where's gonna rank it?
We're gonna push.
Board goes through me mostly.
We need a committee on committees.
It's in my job description.
Okay, so order, there are the committees. Awesome. So then we'll move into Form 700.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Exactly. She's like, Ralph, sign it right now.
Right now, I'm going.
I got it.
Just a reminder, fair political practices commission has its values annually versus both personal financial interest. This is for 2024.
All right.
Okay, great. I'm gonna start handing them out. So you can give them back to me today. You can mail them back. And we get
Today.
Do we get a free gift? Do we fill it out today?
Free gift?
Um, I actually don't have that prepared. I am so sorry. I know.
That wouldn't be fair.
No, it would not.
While you have
Do I get an extra point?
You guys, while you have your pens up, could you please verify your addresses and phone numbers for 2025?
Pass it around. Just say
Good as go.
Yes.
Dan, do you have an extra pen?
Yeah, I can find that.
Actually, you guys filled this out pretty well, so.
And if you need pass copies, I have them. So if you want to
All right, why sign?
Um, page six.
Page six.
Yep.
You gotta have something.
I don't have anything.
I don't have real estate in the jurisdiction.
Okay, today, what's today?
Today is February 1st.
What's my wife's?
Do we buy Apple products?
So it's page six.
Do we buy Apple products?
Um, I actually do believe so.
Do we buy Apple products?
No.
No, right.
Yeah.
That's only stock.
All I have to do is sign it, that's right.
Yeah, and mark if there are reportable interests.
Where's that part? Just let her show me.
Where do you want our address?
Get it done. So right here, you can
Thank you, Pat. Gotcha.
If there's nothing before you say no. And then you put the total number pages here, which is two one.
What?
Yep.
Is that it?
You're done.
Okay, that's good.
Gold star for you.
You want the envelope?
Um, actually, if you want to give it, I will take it.
I have no investments for property or gifts, so I'm empty. I have nothing.
Oh, I gotta do this? Okay, well.
Who wants?
So
Thank you for filling all this out for us, though. This is, you think it's so easy, there's your name on it, it's so good.
So you want to sign a date, and then if you have any
You want the envelope? You got postage on it already.
I have nothing.
Brittany, you need the envelope?
Um, we will reuse it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not someone else. Thank you so much.
I don't have anything in it. I don't.
You don't have real estate in the jurisdiction?
Not in the jurisdiction, Jeff.
And I don't have a
My stock is either Piper or it's mutual funds.
Or mutual funds, those don't count. And they don't give you gifts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or pay anything.
So, yeah.
So that's it. Okay.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is BD and I
See, we're here for you. You have to harass me, and why do we have to violate this?
So if you, if you all are continuing to work on your Form 700, that's fine, but I know Chair Louisa's
I don't care about his
We're moving along, keep it going.
We're not leaving till tomorrow, so we can get time to
All right, so this next item, you might remember, this has been in the works for like two years, definitely over a year. So we established a university equity and teaching council for three years.
I think we passed this.
Who was on that?
Uh, it's, so Brittany and myself are the co-chairs, and we meet with, the membership has changed a little bit, but about like ten staff members.
Can't read, I'll send you an email.
Wasn't Pat on it?
Pat Martel is the board liaison.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the EI council, yes. And she's provided some great input and guidance for us all, and you know, essentially
Five twenty, barely four.
Looking at various aspects of our instructional programs, our hiring practices, to make sure that we are being fair and equitable, and that we're valuing individuals from wherever they come from and, you know, whatever their identities are. So there is a proposed
Can you pull out the beginning of my computer, babe?
A little
Little
Um, and we had talked about, you know, just in general, how the organization values these things and wants to ensure that we, you know, not a non-discriminatory policy, because we have a separate policy for that, but more on the positive side, that we are making a welcoming place where people have a sense of belonging, and that we are supporting all of our community members, whether they are staff, or students, or parents, community members. And so this is a general statement of values.
I like that. It is valuable for young people to see role models who look like them, talk like them, and that's like that.
Yeah, representation matters. So there's the the general statement, and then the sort of directive part is a commitment to instructing staff and employees and representatives of the organization to behave in ways and conduct operations of the organization in adherence to these values. There are some some statements kind of similar to like, you know, branding messages and things like that. If there are questions or, you know, things that we can communicate when people ask about our values in this arena. So we have kind of like a longer statement, a very short form message, and then what we called an icon message, kind of a tagline. And we were debating whether we wanted to use the nouns or the verbs, so it could be belonging, respect, growth, or belong, respect, grow. Either way.
Either.
Six will have the But these are also things that we can use, you know, in our branding and marketing. So we had talked perhaps about, you know, in Pivot San Diego, if we need to change some of our marketing messaging, I think this is another option of things.
Can I just add on this? They have the values
Projector screen, by, the left over there. Oh, oh, fund, safe, respectful, kind, focus, calm, quiet, invited.
I mean, that kind of covers the whole thing right there.
I feel like, I saw it yesterday, I feel like cool, so. Well, we were kind of doing this before the world was doing this. This is largely our DNA, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm being inclusive and helping all young people feel comfortable.
Yeah, and that's kind of the idea behind having a short form message or an icon message, is we can put these in places for people who don't know us as well, such as job postings and descriptions, to sort of immediately let them know who we are as an organization.
What, is there more?
Uh, it's
My computer died, so I did read this, but I'll see it again since we're talking about it.
And it's essentially just, you know, acknowledging that as employees, we we represent the organization, we interact with families, and so it's our responsibility to conduct ourselves and the business of Pivot Charter Schools and Rhodes in adherence with these values.
Okay, any comments from board members? Good work. I know you've been working on this for a long time. Any comments?
It's awesome.
It's it's sort of a hot political fight. I mean, the desert, really shut up. The the initials are whatever, I don't know, in some places.
But really, it is, it does boil down to
Oh, yeah, right.
what you talked about, that
Yeah.
just creating a sense of belonging.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this before the board takes action? DEI statement and directive. None? I have it to understand that our board and liaison is very supportive of this.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the DEI statement and directive. Oh. Okay, it moved by Halverson.
Second.
Second by Holmes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Brittany. Good work. Great.
Yeah, it's, it's
It's, we, it's easy to support something like that when we live it.
Yeah, that's, that's who we are.
That's who we are.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. All right, then we're moving into our financial policies and procedures.
Yes, so at the last meeting, you all had authorized the establishment of a new bank account, which is specifically for these purposes of depositing unrestricted donations to Rhodes. And with that, we deemed it appropriate to update the financial policies to list that account. Some of it is just, you know, obviously changing the date and the version number. There is essentially one change, and I'll make it bigger here.
identity for your name.
I know.
You have it on. Go pick them up.
Listen.
So the proposed addition is to add language about this new bank account. So it's in the section on banking, there is a section above it about the here, the general checking account.
Yes.
And so now that we have a second account for very specific purposes, we've added a section naming it the fundraising account. If there's any feedback or, you know, modifications to the proposed language, this is obviously just a draft at this point, so depending on how you all feel about it.
How we spend money.
We can either take it back for revision and bring a yet another revised version to you at the next meeting, or if you're happy with the language, or if the modifications are small, you could vote to approve the revised policy at this meeting. But this is sort of a first read. Essentially, the language here establishes that the same operational protocols that we use for the general checking account will also apply to this account. So no one has, you know, unlimited access to choose what they do with this account without going through all of the normal checks and balances, such as signers are the same as for the general checking account, but limits on, you know, when two signers are required is the same as the general checking account.
Why are we restricting what's deposited into this account? Clearly, state monies aren't going to go into this account, but a donation must not be designated by a donor as intended for this. It must not be associated with, why?
So the, the, all of the operations of Pivot Charter Schools, so like, for example, paying for field trips, that money that we get donated from families for treat field trips should go into the Pivot Charter Schools, kind of where that general operational account is.
Why is that?
I don't understand that.
So
Well, first of all, it's restricted because it's just for that field trip.
Yes.
Well, but that could be a charitable contribution.
Yeah, why wouldn't they go into this?
It isn't because it's restricted.
This is for Rhodes
Because we're asking them to pay for a field trip. It's for that trip.
What if they write a check to to North Bay for a thousand dollars?
That's different than paying for a field trip.
Does that go in there?
Yes.
But then, but they can't say North Bay on it.
That's what I'm saying. Why are we, why are we putting this on ourselves?
Hold on, hold on.
We, when we talked about this in November, we talked about making the account for unrestricted donations to Rhodes, not to specific Pivot Charter Schools. Because Rhodes would need to have discretion to decide what it went to. So if we have a donation that's specifically for Pivot North Bay, and we put it in this account, then Rhodes doesn't have discretion to say they want to give it to something else.
The problem is, you know, hobbits always get restricted gifts, and they're perfectly valid gifts.
Yeah, that's why I'm kind of confused.
And so a donor can say, I'm making a gift to Rhodes, I feel like it applies
Problem for North Bay.
I feel like it applies to field trips.
Or the problem for North Bay, or whatever.
See, my thing is, yeah, I see what you're talking about, but donations, why, maybe to a particular place, like North Bay's the biggest. And it's, you know, it's a chamber of commerce in in Santa Rosa wants to make, and they want it for North Bay. They, so how, how can that be used for purposes of doing stuff that we don't have any discretion for what it's for, but, but where it's going?
Why would we restrict ourselves as well, in our own policies?
Well, so when we were speaking with Entech and our auditors and our attorneys, they had, you know, the understanding that our general checking account is where we do general operations of Pivot Charter Schools, our state
That are tax supported, that's right.
And also the contributions from parents that are specifically for the existing core operations and offerings of Pivot Charter Schools educational programs go in
Then you, as our chief financial officer, would choose to book it that way. I don't have an issue with that. I'm just saying, on this, and I think it's probably a discretionary account, fundraising account, because we may get some grants or other things in here.
Yeah, if if we were to put these specific types of things, like where parents are paying for caps and gowns and for field trips into the fundraising account?
No, 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 no. That's how you book it. I don't care. Like, it's so I'm saying we shouldn't restrict, this is the account we're gonna start raising money for. I don't want you to tell me where I can and can't put my dollar if I'm putting it into this account. It shouldn't matter. It's a discretionary account. Any and all dollars that we raise and tell you, put these dollars in this account. If you're collecting money from parents for a field trip, you're not gonna put it in this account. This policy shouldn't restrict us from saying, hey, I want to put a thousand dollars in this account. I think I'd like to do something for North Bay special. Let me think about it. Oh, you can't do that. Well, why, why, why? Why did you do, you know what I mean? That, that you shouldn't, the policy should just be establishing the account and setting who can manage it. We shouldn't say not schools, because you, as you, you're the controller, right? You'll, you'll, you know what money is going where, but this is for something we get a I think we might apply for a Santa Rosa Community Foundation grant. They're not gonna fund Riverside, and then it can't go into this.
It's a Rhodes education. We can't, we can't identify a school for, for get it for overall of decisions. Isn't that what you're saying?
So there was some concern when we met with the subcommittee about decision making and codifying some rules and restrictions so that it didn't have a lot of discretion
Well, why don't we hear from the subcommittee then, because I don't know that I agree with that.
So that's part of why we were doing this, because we wanted to make it very clear.
Is this legal mumbo jumbo, or we, do we have to do this?
You have to do it. It's in our policies.
Or is discretionary, we can do it this way, or we can do it another way?
So, um
We're doing this to ourself.
Yes.
And we're setting a policy.
Okay, we put our own words, I mean, my line of advice is raising money is something, I gotta identify a school, and you'll give money to that.
Okay, let's hear from our subcommittee.
I don't remember us restricting, I would, I don't remember us restricting only unrestricted gifts to this account.
Correct.
I would really not, if I was listening in on the conversation, I don't think I would have agreed to that, because it's just first of all, as Jim said, a foundation, a global, a hyper local foundation is not gonna want to support, let's say Riverside. But Riverside Foundation is not gonna want to support North Bay. So we want to allow people the opportunity to give to Rhodes. They can restrict their gift. I, as a donor, can say, I only want, when it's legal, it has to be a legal restriction, but I only want to restrict my gift to a certain activity, like educational materials.
Right, and that's absolutely allowed. And the the gift acceptance policy, next, we'll get into that part of it, right? But the question that was raised in our conversation was, when we get a donation, how do we decide which account to put it in and ensure that we are not commingling funds that are from the state with other monies that might be used to fund something that state monies cannot legally allow? In the November board meeting and in the conversations, that's what, this, the the primary purpose of this bank account is to avoid any commingling of funds that might be used for any purpose that our state taxpayer dollars should not be.
So in my head, there's, there's the, you don't want to comming, you want to, you want to have a place for all charitable contributions to land. That's this account.
Yes.
From there, you can, I think you can commingle. Now, I'm not an attorney or an accountant.
By definition, you're gonna commingle.
And, I'm sorry, I'm still talking. Uh, well, I mean, allow me to try to articulate, or attempt to articulate.
Yes, sir.
So I think that from from that point, the business office can decide that these funds are gonna go support this outreach program. And you can, you can commingle those funds. There's no reason not to. Unless I'm not understanding what the attorneys told you in the background.
No, I really hear, what I hear you saying is, there's a funnel. So there's our, our operating account that's day eight, all, and that's how we operate. Then there's this other account that I want to give towards the Ashland Shakespeare Festival. I would love to send the kids there every year. Great, I want to buy new shoes for every Pivot student. Great, I want additional mental health service. Great, and that all goes into this, and then we can vote to move these dollars towards the other account to support those things, is what you're saying, right?
I don't think we have to vote.
You don't need to vote. That's what we're trying to do with the policy.
When the donor makes the restriction and we accept the gift, it just happens automatically. The board doesn't have to vote on each transaction.
And why do we need to have an extra step of then moving it? Why can't we just put it directly into the account where the school is operating?
I think you can. It's just
That's why we've set it up this way.
So hold on, I think if we just change fundraising account to charitable contribution account, right, or discretionary account.
Because it could be a donation or a grant.
Okay, so discretionary account.
Yeah. And we strike
And we take out that they can't be used for specific other Pivot Charter Schools.
It does not say that it can't be used for it. It's that the donation that comes in is designated for specific
It says must not
Must not be designated by donors.
Must not be designated.
I don't agree with that. That's the phrase. Can we get that phrase out?
Must not.
That's the only, that's the only thing I think I'm hearing from that.
Must not be designated by donor as intended for a particular school, and must not be associated with school, excuse me, I think those should be strict.
So one of the things that did come up when Liz and I were talking about this is what if somebody makes a restricted donation, which, you know, like you said, the shoes. But what if you said, what if the donor said, I'm donating this to your STEM program? Well, I don't have a science, technology, education, and, uh, science, technology, what, and something math, engineering and math program. So I can't actually spend their money that they've designated to a STEM.
You don't donate the donation.
And that's what we were trying to cover.
You don't donate it.
But that's the next agenda.
Oh, sorry, got it, nevermind.
You turn it back to them.
Okay, okay.
We don't have
We have a conversation.
So we're good.
That will be the next agenda.
Okay, sorry, I got ahead of myself. So if we strike that and we change the name of the account, are you guys good?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you, Steve?
Can we bring this back for review in April instead of approving modifications now, because I want
What's the, what's wrong? I feel like there's still some tension or something. What's up?
No, no, wait, we, this is a first read, so we're asking for your feedback. You're providing feedback.
Oh, you want us to approve it today?
I I would like to actually revise the language and have you approve it specifically, if that's okay.
In this final form.
I get, I, I'm just a little confused what the attorney and our accountant said about this.
Yeah, I I I feel like we need to take this feedback back to the drawing board a little bit and maybe push it.
And
I'm happy to strike two sentences and move approval.
See if we can do, see if we can do that. We can strike that, that part of it.
I can strike two sentences and move approval.
Yeah, exactly.
Take, 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 I'll have them off the next meeting.
Please state very clearly for the recording exactly what the changes that I will send this to you.
I mean, I, I thought, why, why are we, why, this seems weird.
Well, I think what Liz is saying is we want to make sure that what we're suggesting as changes will be legal.
Yeah.
But you can still
This isn't, this is an account, it's a discretionary account we're creating, what's
But what I'm saying is, I, this is not an editable document right now. I'm not typing in the changes. I want to know specifically so that I can make the changes in accordance with your wishes.
I don't understand that.
So please state what you would like
I was saying that I would support this policy, striking the sentence. In order to be deposited in this account, a donation must not be designated by the donor as intended for a particular Pivot Charter School. It must not be associated with any specific educational program offering of Pivot Charter Schools.
Strike it.
And I would move to approve this.
And what would you like the account to be called? I heard some concern about that.
I care. I think discretionary, yeah.
I don't care.
What, Steve, you have a thought? Who cares? Charitable gift account or something? What, fundraising seems like we're selling popcorn or something.
We might have to do that.
I think discretionary.
Discretionary account. So strike, so it's, and that's my second, is Rhodes discretionary account.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move that.
So within that, within that account, there's a mini accounting system that says
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
So much of this is for this.
That's right.
And there's a
That's right.
Yeah.
That's how I understand it, too. And as Liz, our, as our controller, she'll have a crack at that. And then at some point, if there is a, I mean, a beautiful gift of a hundred thousand dollars or something that's undesigned, we as a board would discuss that, and then Liz would book it appropriately. Okay, great. That's my motion. Is there a second?
I get
Great. Further discussion? Okay, before we vote, I guess I should ask, any members of the public that wish to speak on this? I didn't ask the public. This is an action item. None? Wait for Liz to check. Okay. Then I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Just trying to make less work for you. I might bring something back if we don't have to. Like, that's great. Liz, thank you for doing that and setting that up. That was great. I think that opens up a whole new venue for even us to give money. So thank you for doing that. I really appreciate that. You've had, there's actually a few cool extra efforts for you. There's that one, and the DEI one, and then the LAIF, which is really cool, too. So thank you for the extra work you've been doing in these areas. Let's hit LAIF. This is great.
All right, so this next one is Yeah, the gift acceptance policy, which goes hand to hand with the, the last one, the financial policy. So there may also be some changes to this based on what you all have just said, because these dovetail. So the, the bank account, that's more of a logistical, operational, receiving, the actual funds, where they get deposited, who has, you know, authority to sign payments and checks and things like that, for the financial policy. This is based on, it's a very shortened, condensed, sort of modified version of a wonderful template that Members Eagle had shared with us.
I was wondering, like, where did you learn to write something like this? This is really good.
Actually, I, I, I did write most of it, actually.
Well, that's, that's out of your wheelhouse. That's good.
Yeah, she writes very, very well.
So the, the, the sample policy that Members Eagle had shared was very extensive and for an organization that was much larger and, you know, used to, you know, like endowments, gifts of real estate, things like that, that are kind of beyond the scope of our current efforts as we're getting started in this endeavor. At the moment, yes. So this policy is just, you know, providing some guiding principles about when to accept gifts or when to accept gifts or to politely say, no, thank you. That's not, you know, a type of gift that that is um something we have the capacity to to oversee. Um, if it's something uh like real estate, for example, um, not that anybody is giving away free real estate, but um, so there's some guiding principles.
This is really good.
Different types of gifts, um, and uh I did not include many of the types of gifts on here that were in the sample policies such as real estate and things like that. But um they're kind of included in this other category. Um, if things are proposed to be donated that are not cash appra, cash equivalents or, you know, goods donated items, then we really need to evaluate those on a case by case basis about whether or not uh we have the capacity to accept and implement um gifts as desired by the donor, or whether it's worth it to establish that structure to be able to oversee and implement a gift that's, you know, large or has a lot of moving parts to to overseeing it. So um kind of all of those other types of gifts are kind of in this other bucket. Um, so some of this is, you know, just compliance with providing uh, you know, tax forms and things like that. Um, and if the, if the value, you know, is less than five hundred dollars, for example, um, then that is much easier to deal with. But once we get to the five hundred dollar limit, there are potential IRS reporting requirements and forms that need to be um completed and signed, so just kind of noting uh that threshold. And then um we do also at the bottom uh acknowledge the record keeping, um how we will provide a letter um acknowledging the donation. Um, two hundred and fifty dollars is the limit there. Um, this part here, the gift acceptance procedures, this, there is this part that corresponds to what we just talked about in the financial policy procedures. So I would assume maybe this would also uh need to be modified to align with that. Um.
I think that's actually smart that you, on the acceptance of large gifts, you have that aligned with our purchasing policy, huh?
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
Similar to any contracts of thirty thousand dollars or more that you you all would need to take action on that.
So we have to deal with that.
Yeah.
That was awesome. That'd be awesome.
Um, so obviously there are no donor restrictions, they can be accepted uh automatically. Um, however, here we can um modify, perhaps maybe make the uh.
I don't see any problem with that.
No, that's okay in this, this this says if I wanna give to this, it goes to that, and it goes to that school's, yeah, that makes sense.
I don't see a problem with that. The only, the only type of gift I would maybe call out from the other category is appreciated um uh marketable securities. Because the the, it's, yes and thank you.
Can you tell the non-financial person what would fall into that category?
Stocks.
Stock or bonds.
Regular traded stocks.
Would you not call them cashable?
Some people will, some people will give stock away, because if they sell it, they get taxed on it so heavily, they don't, so they give the whole value to it.
It's a common thing.
It's a common thing.
Uh, it's not a cashable, and and the the reason I say that is, we should have a little sentence that says, we will be selling it immediately. And don't ask us to hold on because it's gonna appreciate even more.
Got it.
You give it, it's ours. We do whatever we want with it, and we're gonna sell it immediately.
And I think we may be restricted on ownership of those to begin with.
Oh.
How so?
Um, as a pseudo-government agency.
Oh, that's true.
And the requirements of being able to have.
I know foundations, I mean, our church gives, your, I, yeah, your island counts, we'll move money up from there. But that's not a public agency, obviously, so.
Yeah, I know, we we, like, we're restricted in the types of investing that we can do, uh because we're using.
So we just sell it.
Mostly it's taxpayer dollars, obviously, so this is separate and it's a donation. So I I'm not sure if it's subject to the same rules, but we can't take taxpayer dollars and put them in speculative, you know, investments that.
No, right.
We just sell them anyway.
Well, that's the point, we, I mean, I would, I would recommend.
Upon acceptance, we sell.
We sell these immediately, but that fraction of a second that we are the owner of, that are breaking the law.
Yeah, that's that's the question, really.
Yeah.
Can we accept that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, we we'd be against our investment policies, right?
Well, we don't have, we don't even have an investment account to accept.
Well, we'll have to go on.
Yeah. We will.
Well, I think the question, can we in fact accept stuff like that?
Yes, so maybe now that that would fall under the other proposed gifts, but we can modify once we find out what's legal.
Yes. It certainly.
Yeah.
Right. It certainly falls under other, I have no problem with that now, but I would suggest we call it out.
Okay.
Somebody down the road is gonna say, oh, hold on to this, because it's going up, up, up.
Yeah.
And it's gonna go down.
Well, even if, even if they're just giving it in the way of spreading capital gains, they're gonna give it to you. Can we in fact accept that, period?
Why couldn't we?
She's telling a state agency can't accept.
No, but nonprofit can, Rhodes Education Organization can accept that.
I don't know, but you, I find.
We gotta check first, that's all.
What is our investment policy, sir?
No, our, Rhodes Education Organization's a five oh one, what?
C three.
It is a C three, well then,
Yeah.
we can accept stock or other gifts from people in their estate planning or whatever, else we would just sell it.
Yeah.
Extentia.
And that's what Steve said, we would sell it right away.
But you have to have a vessel to which you can accept it, so they can write it off and then sell it.
And we currently don't.
Right, but when we get there, we do that.
Yeah.
So I think.
For now, it falls under other, but in a future revision, we could.
I think it's appropriate how you channel these in three C, one and two. I don't have, I I didn't like it in the other thing, because it was hamstringing this on that side, but I think it totally makes sense. If someone's giving a gift for the, this specific thing, we'd accept it and you'd put it in the general checking account, that makes sense. And if it's not for those things, it goes in the other account where we now don't have the restrictions on it, right? So that makes sense.
Okay.
This looks good. But this, you may wanna bring this one back, right? We need to see one of this one.
Well, if 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 we, if staff thinks there's a issue with the legality of accepting with security, right, absolutely.
I think that's.
Because I have no.
And where you're going.
And if we can, we need to set up a separate.
I don't know why a five oh one C three couldn't.
I don't know, we, we just need to ask, we just, maybe we can.
So why don't you bring this, check that out, and then put this on the consent agenda for April?
Right.
Is that okay? Because we've already kind of discussed it.
Or would you like to adopt this version and then a revised version will come back once we?
Ralph might wanna make twenty five thousand dollar gift in the next month, so we probably should adopt it.
I think so. Could you get the check now?
Barbara, hey, sure, you can make that tick through.
I think you, I think you better figure that out. I think you better find out, you know, bring it back.
Um, okay, are you comfortable with us approving this? We have something on the books, and then you can, we can amend it as needed?
That was our.
This was good work. Steve, thank you for helping with this, Liz, that's out of your wheelhouse, that was good stuff.
I had to go back to my uh former colleague to 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 get the draft back.
That was good.
Which I drafted about twenty years ago and they're still using pretty much intact, so I was pretty proud of that.
Yeah, that's good work, thank you. Good stuff. Okay, is any member of the public that would like to speak on the gift acceptance policy before we adopt it? No? See none? Okay, I'll ask for a motion. Board Member Siegel has moved this policy, appreciate you helping. Yeah, your honor, this would be your honor. Um, OJ, weren't you on the subcommittee?
Yes.
Would you like to second? As our committee members? Sure, OJ seconded it, alright. If that's okay with you, you guys put the work into it. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Cool. Cool, new little, let's let's fill the pot.
Growing, we're growing up.
Let's fill the pot. That's a big, cool thing, alright.
And let's find the person that's gonna help us fill the pot.
And I would just also like to say thank you to Steve and OJ, because your advice and expertise on this has been really invaluable. Um, and just, you know, we've been asked by our auditors before, do you have a gift acceptance policy? And we've never had one. And they said, well, you don't, you don't really get gifts, so it's okay, but um you should probably consider adopting one, you know, so this is definitely helping us move in the right direction to build that structure and capacity um to be able to do the work that was discussed yesterday.
So is the account, um, is it open?
It is not yet active.
Okay.
No.
Well, how long do you think it'll take?
Um, it actually, I'm assuming with the, I believe it was the next week or so.
Okay, great. Because um it'll be nice, I I think some of us will make a tribute to that, uh, once it's open, and then um having that for some of these things we've talked about will be nice for.
Well, the one that came across my desk last night, I'll have to go directly to them. I'm gonna plead for some help with that one.
Gotcha. Okay, um, LAIF, look at, we're, we're.
We're growing up.
Man.
You're growing up.
Awesome. Another e- e- extraordinary assignment for the business officer. Go ahead, this is great.
This was huge.
This is awesome.
And it has taken a while, I know, thank you for your.
Doesn't matter.
Everyone on this.
Look at the money, we're gonna be earning more so. I mean, you know, we talk about.
Got cash balance, we wanna make.
Heck, when you're sitting on four million dollars and you're getting an extra percent or two, that helps pay for the fundraiser, you know, I mean, it's just stuff. And this is good money. Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so you all had approved, you know, moving forward with the local agency investment fund. Um, they did have to put us on their next board meeting agenda to determine whether we qualified for um establishing an account, whether we were eligible. Um, and so that meeting of the uh the LAIB uh was on November thirteenth, and they voted unanimously that they approved that we're eligible. Um, so the next step is, in order to actually establish the account, uh they need a board resolution.
Resolution.
So, um, that is what is on the agenda today.
Perfect.
So the resolution here is based on their sample resolution, uh and also the guidance that you all have provided in previous discussions about um, you know, who should have the authority to initiate those transactions. Um, it is essentially uh very similar to our accounts payable process, um, where you had said the uh that Jana and myself, the day to day, you know, initiating of transactions, moving from the general checking account that is non-interest bearing to the local agency investment fund, and then back to make sure that we have sufficient levels of cash in our operational account. Um, primarily the two of us, myself and Jana Gaskell, um, but because we also uh want to ensure that the board has the ability to oversee and manage and also um sign if needed in case of emergency. Um, the authorized signers on our bank accounts also include Chairman Lewis and Secretary Hulson. Um, so we propose in this resolution that all four would be able to initiate those transactions um if if needed or as needed.
So what you'll end up doing, once we join this from a operational thing, is we'll move most all of our money over to this. And then what you'll, you or Ed Tech or somebody, as we're getting ready to do a payroll or a check run, you call and they will wire the money from LAIF to our bank. And and the money's there, check's clear, you know what I mean? So i- i- so this will be the depository of our assets. You'll have, you'll determine as our finance officer how much cash you're comfortable with in the bank sitting there. Obviously, there's gonna be checks that don't clear or whatever, you know. But the bulk of our money will be in this, and you draw on it, and then our deposits should go to this. You'll, yeah, and that that bank is closed, uh, that branch.
So I I know it is, and I was, this was actually a a question.
I see. I'm trying, I'm trying to redevelop this.
Do you remember that day?
I remember.
Remember that day?
Jim, that was a, that was a, we passed the test.
Hold on, this is one of the reasons I I brought up the form as well, because um when we last had to do this with, I believe it was the San Diego County Treasury to set up our new account, so this was in twenty eighteen, I believe, was the last time we had to do this. And I, I'm not sure if this was already closed at that time, but they did need the original address. And so, um.
Interesting.
I don't know if there is a different branch number that this one has been reassigned to or whatever, so it just wanted to.
There's an ATM machine still there for a little bit, but I'm hoping they get that thing plowed out.
So, so this is the, you know, the branding that we did.
Get on that city manager, man, he needs to get a.
Yeah.
We should get that again.
Where the account was open, but with online banking, you know, it's like.
Doesn't matter, I don't.
So uh there may be some negotiations about uh this uh to see what actually works in opening and establishing the account that they did request for the branch number, which I have not been able to find, but the.
It's still there, it's first, it's it's still owned by Bank of America, they just closed it, the branch. It's an ATM machine, and it's a big parking lot, and we're gonna, you know, and look, but for this, I'm sure it's fine. I mean, it's, if you drove up there, there's still a Bank of America there with an ATM machine that's working, you know.
It's kind of an antiquated question.
Very much.
Who walks into a branch?
But there, there needs to be some exception allowed. If I put in a request for a transfer, it doesn't take two weeks.
No, no, it doesn't, it it's it's within twenty four hours. No, no, this is not, this is not, this is the state treasurer of California, and they actually, you you call in, OJ. Government organizations all across the state use this, and the money moves consistently.
What's your ballpark on income, Mike?
That we, our city uses this, right? All cities use this as the repository.
That's a great question, so, yeah, and they, I, they asked the same question, is it, how much do you wanna get invested? Um, we do have actually a fair amount of cash in county treasuries already that are essentially in this. Um, so like in the San Diego County Treasury, we have cash that we keep in there, we don't transfer to our operational bank account until we need it. Um, but we do have quite a bit in our Bank of America account, and so we would probably be transferring somewhere between five hundred and eight hundred Ks.
Yeah.
So, I, what's your ballpark, and how much more we would make in a year, if I could get in now?
I don't know if I can answer.
I think LAIF's paying, LAIF's paying about two point one.
But you said, yeah, he said that last time.
It's about two point one, and we're getting Zippo in the Bank of America.
So our average show, our average deposit would be five hundred thousand?
Perhaps, I mean, it.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Well, a million dollars a year, we're getting twenty one thousand dollars.
Well, I'm just saying, if we have half a million in, in there.
Ten or five.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, is that about the ballpark?
Twenty five, next to twenty five thousand dollars a year, wonderful.
Nothing to say to stick.
Yeah.
So we can now get salaries because of?
No.
Hopefully this doesn't become a whole um new workload. It should, it should, it'll be pretty rote as you're moving money around, it's just a an account, you know what I mean?
Right, and and I'm not sure if we would do it on the frequency of like every payroll, but, you know, at least once a month.
You'll figure it, yeah.
We'll, we'll go conservatively at first, just to make sure.
That, I mean.
But it's very liquid, that.
But 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 the money in the county treasures is really what you use to make salary payments and.
Um, no, actually, uh, it's except for Riverside, Riverside uh County Treasury, because we have to use their financial system, there is a payroll system. So uh those employees on that payroll system get paid directly from the Riverside County Treasury. Um, however, for most of our other payrolls, it comes out of our Bank of America account.
So, so what happens? You you reach out to the county?
To wire transfer.
To wire.
Uh.
Well, not always.
It depends on the school. So North Bay, uh, so we have a county treasury account at North Bay, Sonoma County, and in San Diego County. Um, San Diego County, they allow us to keep money in the county treasury as much as we want, and we initiate a wire transfer whenever we want to move that to Bank of America. Sonoma County does not allow us to do that. They cut us checks whenever we get revenue. So we, we haven't been able to earn much interest in North Bay because they don't allow us to keep money sitting in the county treasury.
And payroll's drafted off the Bank of America account, right?
Yes.
Yeah, like our account payable, Bank of Ameri, yeah, right.
Yes, and then in Beaufort County, we don't even have a county treasury account because they don't allow charter schools to have.
This is like a money market account for government. That, this is like, you know, when you grossly have the money.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not curious about the other account, that's what I'm really asking about.
Yeah, yeah, so in Beaufort County, we don't have a county treasury account, so we earn really no interest there. And they just pay us by check out of their, kind, they have like a pool uh county treasury account, but I think it's for all the charter schools.
I would expect this to have a margin, that's what I'm asking for.
It's very different by by counties, but it is um.
Yes, and the return investment percentage, what is that right now?
Oh, sorry, it's right about two point one right now. And so it's usually above, um, it's usually above like the typical money market, but not as good as a uh CD, you know, it's liquid, it's instantly liquid. And it's really invested in uh state debt, other things, so, um, but it's, there's so many agencies and so much money in it. There it is, right there, that's, yeah, you can look it up, that's the, the state treasurer runs it, what's it like, what is it now?
So they have all, way back to nineteen seventy seven. So they have all, way back to 1977?
Yeah, there you go. Four, that's the rate right now?
Really?
That's what it was last year.
Oh, it's 2.1. Damn. There you go. Not bad, huh?
Very good.
Higher than I thought. That makes me wonder why our city treasurer's even investing in anything but that. That's pretty...
4%?
Wow.
We do 4.5.
Which, that makes sense. Like...
We who?
We have some other rates.
Well, yeah, well, this is a public agency, man. We can't invest money in...
This is risk-free.
I know. I was going to say, I mean, my counterpart for another charter management organization that's much bigger than us, though, she moves things around, you know, she was a CBO as well before that. But she does CDs, and she always, she has so many that she always has enough on hand, and she's just constantly selling them.
But look at this. I mean, a CD, you're going to be hard-pressed to try and get 4%.
Well, four, yeah.
That was last year.
You know, she's making a few.
Last year or last month, 24 December.
Like, I have a CD for 5.45.
I know.
Yeah, she's making a couple million.
That noise was that high?
Yeah.
For liquid, totally liquid, totally...
Credit union thing is about that much for a CD.
Wow.
So that would be, you know, $50,000 a year.
Right? I mean, that's money.
Yeah. So that's why, you know, when you ask about the...
That's our development person.
That's what I'm saying. No, that's why I wanted to do this. This is like free money.
And you're just...
All right.
Maybe we had this decision.
Big job. Okay. Any member of the public wish to speak on this? It's very exciting. Thank you. We're growing up. No, this is, we're like a legitimate government. This is what legitimate governments are.
Well, in Orange County, we have a 6% thing for several years until it went bankrupt.
Yeah, well...
This is not derivatives. OJ, good for you on doubling that. All right. Any other comments on this? Any member of the public wish to speak on 4.6, Local Agency Investment Fund? Hearing none? I'll ask for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing investment in Leif. Second, second by OJ. Motion by Holmes. Any further discussion? All those favors say aye. Aye opposed? Do work, Liz. Let's get the money in. Okay, that's great.
It's worked for a year since you directed this.
No, it's great.
It's a process.
It's real money. I know it's time, but it's going to be real money. It's, it's worth it. Okay, then the next, we have the first interim budget reports, 4.7 through 4.10. And I think we've seen those, Liz. Do you want to, anything else you want to add about those?
Just that, you know, these are the standard ones we submit by December 15th of every year, so they already have been submitted. This is a ratification. And if you have any questions, you have to answer them.
Any board member questions? Any member of the public wish to speak on items 4.7 to 4.10? Hearing none. You get the question?
Nope.
Oh, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the interim budget reports with votes reflecting individual votes on each item. So move, thank you, Segal.
OJ was first.
Oh, OJ? Move by OJ. Thank you. Second by Segal. Sure, great.
That may be explosive.
We got you that one. We got you in that one. All right, any further discussion? All those favors say aye. Aye opposed? Yeah, great. Those are done. We'll move to consent. We have minutes, check registers, and that's that. Any questions on the consent calendar? Any members of the public wish to speak on the consent calendar? Hearing none, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Vote. Thank you.
Negative.
Second. Thank you. So we got Alverton Suterman. All those favors, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Consent calendar approved. Then we have, why don't we take the next meeting date before we go to closed session so we can discuss that before people leave? So we'll, so we have closed sessions the last, then we have the upcoming meetings, yeah. So let's move to 9.1 if we can. So the next meeting in April, we do not have Tom. I have a meeting in Laguna Beach that day that ends around 2:00 on Friday, and I need to be back Saturday in town early for a couple city council things and a Chamber of Commerce thing. So that day actually got tough for me. So you're down to two board members in April. And Jay, you couldn't make this either, right?
I couldn't make it physically.
It's not ideal. I mean, we should have it at our board meeting.
I texted you.
I know, I know, I know, I know. I'm just saying. So let's try and see what else is out, yeah. What about the...
Historically, you all have met at the end of March instead of in April, and we just had, I believe, the first time you ever met in April was last year, so...
Can we do the 22nd and 23rd of March?
Not with your executive director. She leaves on the 22nd.
Oh, should we go later then?
We gotta go later.
Or you can have it without me.
That meeting day doesn't work great for me, and Tom's not here, so shoot. Is that next, 11, 12, 18, 19? We're on spring break.
How about the 19th, April?
I won't be here, but that's okay. I mean...
No.
All right, thinking that you're here.
25, 26.
Okay.
Of April?
Yeah. That's getting late.
It's really late because it's budget stuff and labor negotiations, contracts, salaries.
Can you swing it to then?
Um, since it's mostly, if we meet with the subcommittee and get everything squared away...
Because I'm in Sacramento, up to the 25th, it'd be very easy to zip over here.
So we're looking at April, what?
If that works, 26.
26 for the meeting.
Yes, 26.
So, yeah, so I'm going to have to do something, but I'll figure it out. That's all.
Okay, I know.
I'll figure it out.
You could?
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
Can we see her?
Yeah. She should be living up here.
I know. We'll see her. Does that work for you guys? Right now, okay, let's try.
So then you're only going to get one...
Huh?
I just moved this.
Are you okay with going three months without a board meeting?
Well, that's up to you.
Well, if you are comfortable...
Couldn't we do a teleconference meeting if there was something that needed action, the traditional old-school?
Yeah, we're allowed to for special, yeah. So, you know, here's what I'm thinking, right? So if, usually you see the budget at least twice, right? With, you know, like a draft with what the budget subcommittee and what, you know, Liz and I have proposed for salary increases, questions that they give us lots of feedback around that, questions that have come up on the specific positions, all of that happens. Possibly this new development coordinator position, we'll have new information, a potential salary, how are we going to pay for it? All that's going to come up. And if we wait until April, really, literally, this time in April, four, five weeks later, we're approving a budget with all those things.
Right. So we talked about it in April. Then you have a draw from...
And if we need a special meeting, we can have a virtual one.
I actually think it's good to have it a little later because there's a lot of things to get done.
You're going to have more information, accurate information, too. Closer to the May revise and what's, I mean...
I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure you guys...
Liz, we'll just need to schedule some stuff.
Yeah, we might need to get it on the books.
Yeah, a couple of them is what I'm guessing, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Thank you all. 26.
26, yeah.
All right, and then talk about the June one now.
Tell me to review the normal dinner Friday, meeting Saturday.
Uh-huh. And then, okay, that's great.
June, we already did.
Thank you for taking vacation because that moved up me up.
We already moved to the 6th of June.
I was stressed out about how I was going to figure all that out. Okay, June. The June meeting.
We've already got it.
Well, I don't know that we formally did it. I think we should now. So we should actually, I think, take action to move, because these are regular meetings. You have to, I think we have to take action to move a regular meeting. Because we approve our meeting agenda, right? I think most governing boards need to actually do that.
So both, so both of these?
So, yeah, so I'll move that we reschedule the regular board meeting of Pivot Charter School, Rhodes Education from April 5th to April 26th and from June 7th to June 6th.
All right, so we're getting it Friday?
Friday.
Oh, because of the...
Yeah.
Okay.
So you've moved that?
I moved that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those favors, aye. Aye opposed? Okay, great. That helps that. And then you're not missing anything, Jana. That's good.
No, we don't want anyone to miss anything if we can help.
What's it take to get Dr. Cruz, whatever?
So that he could attend virtually.
Oh, no, I think you notified the executive director that you have a kind of extreme... It's a more urgent health issue that prevented you from coming.